Today is a meeting of the Akushna Board of Selectmen. The date is Tuesday, June 9, 2020. We've got an agenda which was previously distributed. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda for the meeting today as revised on June 4, 2020?
So moved.
Second, Mr. DeRoche?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm getting a wicked echo in my, in my ear. I'm going to try pulling one of these out to see if that's better. Okay, first item, and we've got, we've got all, all old business, so let's jump down to that. The town accountant contract approval. That's been out and around and I think distributed to anyone, to everyone, rather. Any, any comments on the documents?
Chairman?
Go, Mr. Gasper.
I, I spoke with Ms. Hebert earlier just on one specific, under the salary. It had one specific, like three words in the first paragraph about the lump sum thing to be removed. And I didn't receive an additional copy, so I'm gonna, she said that she was gonna get rid of that because that made a lot of sense to get rid of it. So she said she would, so I guess when I sign the contract, I'll make sure it's, it's been eliminated. But other than that, I, I like the contract. I think it's, I think it's a better format moving forward for the rest of us. So I make a motion to approve.
Now, I'll second that motion.
Um, all right, and discussion, any discussion? The only comment I'd make, and I know there were, there were a lot of changes that were made. The only thing that I, I'm sorry, I'm hearing, I'm hearing voices in my ears. The only, the only objection I have to the changes that were made is we had something in here that talks about holiday pay and, you know, maybe, maybe was a little too specific and identified some things as holidays that, that are not even holidays, you know? For example, if, if we're, if, if normal practice is to close the day before Thanksgiving, half a day, we don't need to list that as a holiday. We're closing half a day. So I, I, but I think the change that was made, um, you know, basically says, all right, this is, this will follow the Town Hall collective bargaining agreement. And I guess my, yeah, I know, I know. It's in general, it just, I'm not sure I like the idea of a management contract following a union contract. And I, ideally, what I'd like to see us move toward is a standard management contract. That's got standard, you know, fill in the blank for vacation time, fill in the blank for personal days, defined holidays. But I, I really don't love the idea of having a management contract follow a, you know, basically, this document should be self-contained. We shouldn't have to, you know, okay, I'm reading this contract. I shouldn't have to jump from this contract to go find another contract to understand what the provisions of this contract mean. It should be a self-contained document. So that, that would be, but that would be my only objection. And, and again, I, I think we went, I think we went from way too specific to way too vague in the change that was made. So that, you know, other than that, um, you know, I'm, I'm fine with everything else that was done. That would be my only, that would be my only objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Again, I'm, I'm near the end and I, I, you know, hope the board and, uh, you know, Ms. Hebert would move toward a, a standard management contract that, you know, we wouldn't have to, I thought we were done changing contracts. We spent a lot of time on the document that was circulated and we keep changing it. So I, I'd like to see us with a standard agreement that we can just say, we're good with this. Mr. Gasper?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, I think that the new one that we're looking at, it, it does a little of both. I, I agree with you where it comes to, but it's within all of our other departmented contracts. So I'm sure Ms. Hebert and Mr. DeRoche, um, and Mr. Wonau, when he comes on board, we can all work towards making sure that we just, I agree, we list, listed out, that's fine. But it's, you know, I'm, I like the idea of everybody being consistent because I don't want to be negotiating against ourselves in the future saying, well, now they got it and we want it if we allowed more days and other days. But if we kept it the same, we could definitely define it within the contract. It's not a big deal.
Yeah. So just, I mean, just that, you know, the biggest objection is just that reference to, we've got a document, I can't read this document and know what I've got. I've got to take this document and now I've got to call Ms. Hebert and say, oh, Ms. Hebert, I thought I had the, the complete agreement. Now you need to get me the collective, uh, you know, the Town Hall collective bargaining agreement for me to understand what the provisions of this contract are. So, you know?
Roger, you know, I, I think moving forward, I, I think that's something that we could easily do in this contract, just as far as that, that language goes and it's not a big deal. We'll just, you know, we'll, we'll pull it out, we'll extract it, we'll stick it on this document and we'll be done with that. So that's, that's easy enough to do. I agree. I, I don't think that we should be referencing other documents and it does get a little confusing for everybody and making sure you got the right dated contract from the last one. So I don't have a problem with that at all. And I think Ms. Hebert and I could, well, Ms. Hebert could just extract that information and just plug it in without making changes to holidays from departmenteds versus, versus our union employees. That's all.
I think we, I think we need standard holidays in the town. I think we need to, as a, as a town, say, these are our holidays for 2020.
I agree.
I agree too.
So how, how do, do we vote this as is or do we want to amend that? Or how, what do you suggest?
We can, we can vote the contract and we'll just vote it with that, with that change that we add the holiday and, and bereavement and severance and all that other stuff, whatever else we need to do, Roger. We can, we could definitely, Ms. Hebert can do it, forward it to us. We can, we could do that relatively quickly and get it back out. And your signature-
Sounds like a minor revision, yep.
Your signature could even end, end up right on that document.
Yep. All right, so with, with that, with that proposed revision that we're, we're maybe make this document self-contained without a reference to an outside document, is that, that's the revised motion?
I, I would revise my motion to stand by that, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
And I'll second, I'll second the revise.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And happy, we've got a town accountant. An accountant, so, good news.
She signs.
Yeah, hopefully she's all right with it. Hopefully she's all right with it. So congratulations, Mel, welcome.
Congratulations, Melissa.
I'm sure when, uh, when COVID-19 ends, Mr. Chairman, that we'll bring her in for a little, uh, little podium time.
Good, perfect. Okay, Town Hall, next item on the agenda under old business is the Town Hall reopening plan, phase one discussion. Ms. Hebert, you want to lead this discussion? And there was a document that was circulated. I, I made some comments on them. They were grammatical, like, you know, that's probably, you know, maybe a little bit more than that, but didn't really change it, just tried to say things a little differently than they were, than they were said. So do you want to, why don't you lead, Ms. Hebert?
Sure. So essentially, this is our phase one reopening plan. Essentially, what this is doing is bringing our employees back full-time. The Town Hall, the DPW, the recycling center, and then the library and the COA have their own adjusted returning back to work policies at the end. Right now, we've been working on the staggered shifts. I think it's important to bring the employees back full-time. We've made many adjustments to make this atmosphere safe for them to be working side by side. And I feel like that's a good next step for us. It's something that's allowable with all the regulations that the governor has released. If you are all comfortable with this plan, I would like to pick an effective date for when we can start it and, and give the employees notice that they'll be returning to work full-time. And then obviously, everything changes all the time, as you all know with this, the COVID-19. So as soon as we pass this, we'll be working on the phase two plan and, and at least our, our phase two plan, how we start bringing the public back in. In this plan that, that you've been presented with, the public is still, the Town Hall is still close to the public, but we will be available by appointment for anyone who needs any access to, you know, like the town clerk, if you need a birth certificate, we'll still meet you by appointment so that we're able to meet many of the needs that the residents have for Town Hall services. But as we go on and, you know, probably another week from now, I'm sure there'll be new guidance from the governor, but we're working to try to get the public in as much as possible while keeping, um, keeping the building safe for the employees and the residents. So this is our first go at it with the phase one and we'll be working from there to have the phase two. For us at least, where we'll start having more services open for the public. I know, I know something Jim has been working on has been the, the kind of walk-by, drive-by, walk-by offices. So people can still access the collector's treasures office or the clerk's office through a window instead of having to come into the building. So again, this phase one, it brings the employees back full-time. We'll be able to have the DPW back full-time. The recycling center will be open, obviously, following the guidance that we've had, you know, keeping people separated, following social distancing. But, um, you know, we're looking to get everybody back so we can kind of take that step.
Well, if you're looking for, if you're looking for an effective date, I would suggest either Thursday or Friday of this week. You talked about the recycling center would be open full-time. It's normally a Friday, Saturday gig, so it would fall right in line with things this week. If, you know, if we put it off to the beginning of next week, then we've missed this opportunity to open the recycling center. And I've received many, uh, comments, you know, about its operations and when it's going to start up. So I would be, you know, I think it'd be advantageous to, to pick either Thursday or Friday of this week to bring people back, gives them a couple of days before we go into next week and come into the office, catch up, see what's going on and get back into the swing of things.
Reed, Mr. Gasper?
Mr. Cabral?
Want to comment, any comments on that? Any comments on the reopening plan or the timing of the reopening?
No, I mean, we, with Ms. Hebert, I, I mean, I looked it over and, and, you know, I, I spoke with Ms. Hebert yesterday about some things and, uh, you know, I, we're like 98% tax collection, so we've done really well. Thank you very much to all the taxpayers of Akushna for staying up to date with your, your bill pays. We still have to the end of the month and we're already at somewhere, I think, Ms. Hebert, you said to me, 97, 98%, so that's great. And I, I just want to know what full-time, bringing back employees full-time means. What, what are those hours of Town Hall?
So part of this plan, what's presented right now is to keep the Tuesday evening hours out, not to have them to, to continue closing at four o'clock. Mr. Cabral did make a, a change where he added in that we'll generally close at four. If somebody needs to, is only available by an appointment after four o'clock on Tuesday, we will be available to them. The, the thought is, again, while we're close to the public, those late night hours aren't really necessary, but that's up to the selectmen. If you want to keep, if you want to keep them, keep them. If not, I like the, the clause that Mr. Cabral put in that we'll be available during those hours if that's the only time somebody can make an appointment.
So what about Friday? Because the, inside that language in that, in that reopening plan, I think Fridays were left alone at 11:30. So if we're, are we going back full-time or we going back semi-full-time is my question? I guess I'll ask it that way.
So we're, we're going back full-time minus the Tuesday evening hours.
So we're going to revert back to our old hours, seven to four PM, I mean, eight to four PM, every day, Monday through Friday?
Well, we're still under the MOU for the, the, the late Tuesday and the half-day Friday through September. Again, this is up to you. If you want to keep that as the full-time schedule and have the late Tuesday and the half-day Friday as the full reopening, we're certainly able to do that. I think if, if we were to add Friday back as full-time, as the full day, that would be an adjustment to the MOU, so that would take a little bit more.
Is it, is it only an adjustment to the MOU because we're not staying late? So the regularly scheduled hours for our employees are 35 hours, some are 40 hours, but most Town Hall are 35 hours. So you're not doing 35 hours, you're only doing 30 and a half hours, so it's not back full-time. Is all I'm trying to ask is, are we leaving Friday at 11:30 because the MOU is going to be disrupted either way because you're changing hours on Tuesday, saying you only work until four, but Friday, you're supposed to go back? If you're going to work your 35 hours a week for the salary you're being paid, you're supposed to go back to the regular 35 hours a week? So are we leaving Friday alone and letting employees stay until 11:30? I guess that's my question now to the board.
Well, it's an interesting point you bring up.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about that. You know, if we're going back full-time, we're going back full-time. And, uh, Town Hall has adjusted the hours, as you know, over the last couple of years to make Fridays half-day or 11:30, eight to, eight to 11:30, three and a half hours.
Due to the late Tuesdays, but if we're saying we're not doing late, if we're not doing late Tuesdays, what are we doing, gentlemen, for Friday? We, are we making, I mean, that MOU really can be done anytime. I think the MOU goes to late September or November, October 1st or something like that. I don't think it's much later than October. So at any time, the board has the right, Mr. Cabral, we made sure that language was in that MOU that we could cancel those terms of that agreement at any time. Is that, is that something we're going to do for the near term and then let it float? And if we open back up and we go back late in, say, August, September, and we're going to bring up the issue with a different composition of the board later on? I, I'm asking that question. I, I think it's important that we, we answer that question of what we're doing for hours.
My, um, I guess my, my look at it was we're in a sort of a transition period. And I, you know, it, it said, it said in the document that Tuesday nights would not be a night that we would be operating under the extended hours. And I, I objected to that a little bit because, you know, we, we made those hours available to residents as a, as a way of, you know, dealing with people that couldn't get in eight to four or whatever the normal schedule was. So, you know, the addition I made to the, to the, to the document, the reopening plan was, you know, okay, Tuesdays, we normally don't have people there on Tuesday nights, but if somebody calls and they, you know, got to get into the assessor's office, got to get into the tax collectors' off, tax collector's office, you know, need to meet with the building inspector, whatever, that while we're not having them sit there, because I suspect it's going to be slow for a while, we're not having them sit there, they need to make themselves available. If somebody can only get, you know, is asking about our extended hours and can only get there then. And saw that as the transition plan, we're in stage one or two or whatever the, the count is, that, that eventually we get back to normal schedule. So looking at, at it a little bit differently than you, Mr. Gasper, just saw this as being our transition plan from where we are now to, to normal operations and, and didn't really, you know, didn't really object necessarily to just, you know, normal hours, but, but for Tuesday nights, provided we could see people by appointment. So just, just another, just another spin on it, I suppose.
Well, you know, once again, we're transitioning, transitioning out of, uh, out of the state of emergency, out of the, the things that we put in place. To say we're going back to full hours means we're going back to full hours. I mean, how we balance it, how we make the adjustments, um, that might need to be defined a little bit, but I'm, I'm right here. You know, Mr. Gasper brought up a very interesting point. If we're going back to full hours, full hours are Tuesday nights till seven, Fridays till 11:30. So.
I only asked the question because if we're not staying open late, like what we alluded to earlier, Ms. Hebert alluded to earlier, we're not going back to full-time. That's all I'm saying. So are we doing three o'clock, I mean, four o'clock on Friday to make it full-time? Or do we let this plan roll for two weeks the way it is? And maybe in two weeks, the, you know, the board's going to say, you know, we're going to put it, we're going to, we're going to, we got to open Town Hall sooner or later to the public because we're not really open unless we're unlocked the door. So I, I don't know how much longer we're going to continue doing this. I would hope to end it sooner rather than later. Disney World's open, I think we can open. But given the, given the state of the affairs here in Massachusetts and the governor's plans, we're trying to do our best to adhere to as many rules and regulations as we can. So I, I just want to make sure it's clear to the public. We're discussing this and the public's saying, hey, we're open. I don't want somebody to show up at one o'clock Friday afternoon, two o'clock Friday afternoon, like we've seen in the past, and nobody's here to open a door or speak to or answer a phone. So if we're going to, we're going to talk about a reopening plan, let's define it clear for the residents tonight.
Let me ask the question, what, what do you, what should we do? What do you want? But to, I mean, to both, to both Mr. DeRoche and Mr. Gasper, what, 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 what should we do?
Mr. DeRoche, you want to go or you want me?
Well, you brought it up, Kevin.
I mean, I can, I could, I could, I could do it either way. I mean, I just, I just kind of, I kind of tiptoed into the two-week window, right? I mean, we're not going to have people coming in here.
That's right.
And also, you know, I, I think that, uh, at this point, I mean, we could, we could just do it as the terms agree to and say 11:30 for the next two weeks. But, you know, I'm not so sure that that's going to hold too much more water than extending this, you know, I guess delayed opening for any more than two more weeks from the, from the time that we decided we're going all, all in. And Mr. DeRoche, um, you made a comment, so I mean, I'm willing to go, you know, all the way to the-
Well, that would be the 30th, two weeks.
You got to, you got to do, you got to do it on a Monday, right? If we're going to do it on a Monday, the 30th is the end of the month, so you would say the 29th. At the 29th, we're, we're going to make, before the 29th, we make a decision on what Town Hall hours would be. We could either go back to eight to four, Monday through Friday, um, and we'll make a decision on what we're doing, but full-time is full-time. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to open up my leniency can here and say, I guess I'll give it two more weeks and, and if we, if the board agrees to let Friday stay 11:30 with a four o'clock close on Tuesday, I'm okay with that. I'm not going to jump up and down about four and a half hours for two weeks. It's basically nine hours. I'm not going to jump up and down, but I think we need to get a clear shot at what we're doing.
You want to make it automatic now? Do you want to, do you want to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to start this Thursday with reduced, same thing, halftime on Friday, no Tuesday hours, and then automatically on Monday, the 29th, back to normal hours? We could make that decision as well if you want to go there. So do that now, so no additional discussion and give the employees some heads up as to what's coming.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Mr. Chairman, can you just repeat what you said so it's clear?
So we'll make, we'll make a motion, we'll make a motion that's effective this Thursday, whatever that date is, that we will open normal, normal operations, normal operations for, um, the Town Hall will be, um, you know, Tuesday will close at four o'clock. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday will close at four o'clock. Friday will close at, is it 11:30?
Yeah.
And then in, in two weeks, I guess that's June 29th. Staring off at my calendar, I can't see it, but I'm looking in the direction of it. So June, Monday, June 29th, we'll go back to what the hours look like pre-COVID-19. So we'll make that decision now, automatic, give the employees a heads up that this is coming. And, um, Ms. Hebert, how's that sound?
That sounds great.
I think, I, so you want to go, you want to go all the way to, uh, the 29th, Roger? And, and on the 29th, we revert back to regular Town Hall hours?
Correct, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that and I, and I agree. It's, it would be nice. I mean, I know that we're going, we're Mr. DeRoche and saying we're going to open everything back up. You know, I guess for Mr. DeRoche's sake, we can, we can say, so Town Hall can stay doing what they're doing because we're staying until the 11:30 close on Friday anyway, Mr. DeRoche. And we just tell recycling, Friday and Saturday, you revert back to regular hours.
Correct. Correct, because I have to assume the recycling center is going to have, you know, although I'm, I don't know what, in detail, what it involves, but they're going to need to set up a, a system to accommodate the people coming in for recycling now as well as with the brush, uh, brush and wood disposal that we accept as it is now. So this gives them Thursday to set it up, eight o'clock Friday, the recycling center is open till two o'clock, I believe, on Fridays, 2:30. And then Saturday, it's the full day. So the residents will know that, can do that.
All right, we have motions of that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to implement the reopening plan as Ms. Hebert presented, keeping the hours Monday through Friday, Friday being 11:30 closure. On June 29th, we revert back to the pre-COVID hours, closure at seven o'clock on Tuesday night, 11:30 on Fridays. And in that motion, I'll also make a motion to reopen recycling back to the pre-COVID hours Friday, whatever hours they work till three o'clock. And Saturday, I think it was open until 3:30 or something like that.
We'd extended it.
So I think that's the extended hours was that we gave it an extra hour, maybe four o'clock. Whatever it is, we'll revert back to the, the normal recycling hours pre-COVID-19. That's my motion.
Starting this, starting this weekend, starting this weekend.
Starting Friday, yeah.
Second, Mr. DeRoche.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if Ms. Hebert was bundling council on agent in the library, all in that one topic? Are you going to talk separately about that, Ms. Hebert?
I was going to ask for clarification because they are included as addendums to this reopening plan. And I've, I've talked frequently with the library. They absolutely are excited and want to open up. Their, their phase one essentially is the curbside pickup. They're ready to do that. They have a great plan in place to be able to do it. And they're, they were just looking for the word from the selectmen that they were okay to get started with that.
Well, I, I read the letter from Dina and she said she was ready to go. And then the, the letter was dated June 4th. So she's like, as soon as we stay okay, you know, the library is going to be open. So from my aspect of this whole issue with the library, I'm ready to give my okay and they can start up tomorrow if they want.
Mr. Chairman?
And Ms. Gasper?
I spoke with Dean around the parking lot last week. I'm very confident in our library director's plan to reopen. I also spoke with Heather, our director of council on agent. I endorse both of their plans for reopening.
You know, and if they need a day, I mean, we, we made it on Thursday. We just, we just voted for Thursday 11th, if that works for them to be able to call people and say, hey, we're opening Thursday, um, you know, I'm all-
If they're ready sooner, if they're ready sooner, let them go. If they want to go sooner, Julie, with their-
There's only one day difference, there's only one day difference there. So they might need a day to get in and get organized and get the ball rolling.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Item three, COVID updates, governor's phase two reopening plan, lead town meeting forum changes.
Okay. So for the governor's phase two reopening, to keep it quick, this is mainly in relation to restaurants being able to have outdoor seating. And I know I've talked a lot with Joe, um, to try to figure out how we manage. Restaurants are already, you know, reaching out, they're excited to be able to open up. We have guidelines that have been given by the governor and ABCC. And I've worked with Joe where we have a, a plan in place that I'll send over to you all, but basically we created an application for restaurants. If they want to have outdoor seating, it's a new temporary application that gives all the information that we would need to evaluate for the building inspector, the board of health, the fire chief, if there's a tent, we'll get all the information together on the application and be able to give them temporary authorization to have the outdoor seating. The, the, the issue that I wanted to bring up to you all is, um, the ABCC has said that they are fine with the temporary approval, that we don't have to kind of follow all the regular procedures, but it, it does require a vote of the board of selectmen. They have said that if the board of selectmen votes to authorize the town administrator, that the town administrator can give approval on their behalf for these applications. So I wanted to reach out to you and find out what you want to do. I'm hoping if you would approve having the vote to let me authorize, I'll obviously keep you in the loop on the applications, but in trying to make sure people can get approved as quickly as possible and not make restaurants wait for us to post a meeting and have a meeting to approve them, that was one thing that I wanted to bring up, was to vote to allow the town administrator to approve the applications on behalf of the board of selectmen.
So moved.
And I'll second that. For the discussion.
The only thing, Chairman, the only thing I want to add to that is to- The only thing, yeah, you, you, Chairman, the only thing I want to add to that is to make sure that if, if we were to have a restaurant, um, want to put up a tent, because that's something that I do know that is already happening in the city. Um, Fahaven's got them, Dotmets got them already going up. I mean, these restaurants are ready to go. They've already gotten tents, um, up. And I know that there are tent inspections over a certain capacity. And the other thing that I think is important for us to make sure that on the application, Ms. Hebert, that we put that we don't allow alcoholic beverages in public roadways. So it has to be kept on the premises, in other words. So if, because, because of the nature of, in structure of our town where businesses are located, you might get some people floating off with their drinks and we have to make sure to the property owners, restaurant owners, that we don't allow, um, you know, alcoholic beverages on public, in the, in the public streets. That's all, that's all I want to make sure of.
Yep, I'll ma, I'll make sure that that's very clear, but we, we have, as part of the regulations, we do have that. Um, if people are serving alcohol, they have to have it, um, the space fenced in so people can't wander off, like you said. Um, the other, the other two items that I wanted to check with you because, um, again, I want to put it on the application so the restaurants know what to expect, um, we've put on a 10:00 PM curfew, so to say, an end, end time. Um, again, these are outdoor seating, um, restaurants that are close to residents. Um, so looking at a, a 10:00 PM end, unless you think that there's a, a better time to use. And also, um, looking to, um, decline any outdoor entertainment. So no bands, no music, um, just in lieu of the noise, um, for the residents who live nearby, who are not accustomed to having outdoor entertainment seating.
Absol- absolutely. I, 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 I agree to that as well. I, I'm a little concerned about the fencing thing. We're going to stop making people put fences up around their parking lots. I don't think anybody here is going to do it. So I'm a little concerned about the, whose, whose, whose requirement fencing?
Temporary, temporary fencing, so.
I mean caution tape, caution tape?
Any, any kind of.
All right. I didn't know if we had to go put chain link fence up like we're in a dog kennel.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, I think it's what most people would do to keep, you know, hopefully cows and things of that nature out of this space. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Their motion and a second, uh, to authorize Ms. Hebert to act on behalf of the board of selectmen in approving outdoor, uh, seating arrangements, um, with, gave her some further, further clarification. And I know you'll, you know, you've got any confusion or any issues, you'll be consulting with the board. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, any, uh, town meeting quorum changes or is there more, uh, governor's update?
Nope, that was it. So the quorum change, um, basically I, I, this legislation passed, we've been talking about it for a while. It passed at the end of the week last week. Um, we, we received guidance on Monday. Um, we can, um, choose to have a meeting to discuss the quorum being reduced as a temporary measure this year only, for this town meeting only. Um, the requirement is that we post the meeting seven days before the meeting to discuss the quorum change. So if we decide that we want to even entertain having a meeting to change the quorum, um, we post tomorrow. Uh, we could have a meeting any day between Tuesday to Friday next week. Obviously town meeting is that Saturday.
Meeting's the 20th, yeah. Town meeting's a week and a half away.
That's, everything is so time crunched right now. So if, we, we don't have to discuss the actual quorum right now, but if you would like to have a meeting to potentially vote the quorum being reduced as a temporary measure this year, um, that we could post the meeting for next week, um, we can post the meeting tomorrow. The meeting would be either, but one of the days between Tuesday and Friday of next week.
My, uh, so we've got a, and I'll start on this one. We've got a, we've got a non-controversial, uh, warrant. We've, we've left everything off the warrant that could be controversial. We, um, we're going to keep it simple, um, to get it done. But there, you know, we've got to vote the budget. I mean, there are things we've got to get done. And, um, you know, I'm just afraid that we have this town meeting on Saturday, the 20th. And for, you know, whatever reasons, maybe people say, well, there's nothing on the agenda that's, you know, pulling me there. There's nothing controversial. Um, and, and we end up with a, we, we don't reach our quorum of 75. So I'm, I'm really conflicted on this. I, I don't want a quorum of five, but I'm afraid of sitting there on that Saturday, the 20th, and being in a room, uh, with 35 people and nowhere near meeting our quorum and then, you know, and then we're nowhere. So, y- you know, I guess my, and I, I've always thought 75 was not enough people. For a real town meeting, I, 75 is not enough people. But, you know, given, given the circumstances, given the agenda, uh, I guess I'd suggest that we should consider something less than the 75. Or, or again, risk the chance that we show up for four months and, uh, we don't have, we don't have enough people in the room to get it passed. So, um, in which case we've got to, you know, back to the, is it, what's it, the 112 budget, Ms. Hebert? Or, you know, we, we go to plan B. So, um, gentlemen, other comments on that? And where, where would you think the quorum, where would you think the quorum should be? Let's start with that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Deroche.
I mean, this is, as I call it, a pretty vanilla budget, I mean, uh, town meeting this time, the articles and the warrant, uh, that are, that are on there, uh, you know, seem to be passed every year. Uh, we've eliminated, uh, issues of contention that we feel that we should push off to the next town meeting. So I think a reduction in the, uh, quorum is warranted. You know, that number exactly, you know, I can't pick one up, but it should be on the lower side. You're going to have a Saturday. You know, people may not show up, there's, so.
What do you think? We need a, we need a number. What do you?
Well, if we need a number.
Is that, is that too, is that too high? Forty, fifty too high? I mean.
Yeah, I, I would keep it on the lower side. I mean, the fact is, you know, I asked this question to Ms. Hebert, uh, earlier today. Is, is as select board members and finance committee, they all count as part of the quorum.
Yeah, of course, of course, of course.
You know, so if town officials are the only ones to show up, um, you know, we'll have a quorum. We'd have a quorum, you know, if we can go as low as eight people, then we'll have a quorum to do it. And everybody else who shows up, who are, are very welcome to come, um, you know, will only be over the limit. And we won't have the, uh, disadvantage of not having the amount of people and.
I mean, given, given the agenda, I, I, you know, yeah, given the agenda, why not, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Gaspar?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Deroche, you done? I apologize. Are you done?
Uh, yeah, I'm all set, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go, Mr. Gasper.
I, I, I couldn't agree more with both of you. I mean, you, you made a valid point, Mr. Chairman, in the earlier on. I don't think 75 is even good to deciding a $32 million budget. Unfortunately, that's what the town has been dealing with for several years. Um, with that said, I think that the board of selectmen, the school committee, um, Ms. Hebert, all our department heads, we've, we've pretty much done everything we need to do. We've stripped things down because of the, um, anticipated loss of revenue from the state. Um, we've really crushed budgets to, to no end. Um, the board of selectmen really did their part in, in eliminating issues on the warrant to make them non-controversial. I think it's absolutely a necessity to lower the quorum to the lowest. And if we get more people, as Mr. Deroche said, great, I hope we get 150 people. We know that won't happen. They are welcome to be there, but I think it's super important that we as a town have a budget to operate in next year.
Twenty, 10?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you could, you could throw 10 on there. It ain't going to hurt. What's the difference 10 or 25? We know that, we know that we.
We want to meet, we want to, we want to accomplish the meeting.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So why would we be foolish if we put 25?
I take a chance.
Even with local officials, Roger, when we get 15 people, we're screwed by 10. I mean, that don't make any sense. Just take it to the lowest threshold.
That's right. I mean, the state.
Ms. Hebert, Ms. Ms. Hebert's got her hand up. She might have something.
Well, I, what I was going to say is, um, we have to post the, the meeting to this, uh, that this discussion is fine, but we have to have a meeting where we have on the agenda that we're discussing it and voting it, yeah.
We're not discussing this yet, all right.
I mean, it's okay, but essentially.
So we're meeting on the six, 16th, 17th, when do you want to do this?
Uh, my, my, my schedule would be better if we met on Wednesday. Uh, we can do a Zoom meeting, correct?
Yep.
Uh, you know, so we could have a 10 minute Zoom meeting to come up with a number and, uh, which I think we've all kind of agreed upon. The state is giving us the opportunity to, to do this. So I, I feel, and I think we're all in consensus to take advantage of it. And if we have more people, that'll be, you know, something that we've had in a long time, have more people required to come to the town meeting.
So, uh, seven, 17th, at 17th at five o'clock for this topic?
Uh, that works on my end. We can do it in the morning. I mean, and Mr. Gaspar?
I, I don't even need to be there. I already said what I need to say. As long as you two guys show up and do it, it's fine. I thought we could just do it. I thought we could just do it now and get it done and out of the way. But Ms. Hebert's trying to say that it's got to be seven days prior to town meeting. Um, you know.
Then you have to get seven days advance notice so that the public can participate if they don't like the fact that you're changing the quorum. They have seven days notice that you're having a meeting to change it.
Right. So it's mostly on, it's not about changing the quorum number. It's about having, posting seven days in advance to have a meeting to discuss changing the quorum numbers. And if we don't do that, then we would have to stay with the original number of 70, whatever.
75, that's right.
All right, I can do, I can do it on Wednesday, the 17th at five o'clock if we can, if we can promise to limit it to a 10 minute discussion.
You want to, you want to do it in the AM? I mean, Rog is, I mean, it's a five minute, if it's a five minute.
Yeah.
Let's just.
Do it in the morning?
Yeah, I'd rather do it in the morning.
That'd be better for me. That'd be better for me on the 17th.
Yeah, yeah.
9:00 AM?
What time? Excuse me?
Nine, 9:00 AM. We're going to dial in like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Nine, 9:00 AM on June 17th.
Perfect.
Does that work for you, Ms. Hebert? I know you had, we can do this. I know you had some days that you want to take. That's fine.
That works.
Hey, Roger?
Yes.
Hold on a second. Did you just say June 17th?
Yes.
And I thought we were saying that in case somebody wants to oppose it and come and talk to us, we have time to post another meeting before town meeting to discuss it. Is that, no?
I'm not sure that's possible to do, yeah.
All right, I'm just saying, she said seven days and we're only three days out from town meeting. So we only have a 48 hour window to post meetings.
No, so we, so if we post the meeting tomorrow, we have to give at least seven days notice when we post it tomorrow before we have the meeting to vote the change, yeah.
So you're going to post it on, on the webs, on the webpage and all that, and the town's website? And, and everybody's going to watch this tomorrow or the next day? And if they're opposing of it, they have time to, to comment on.
Exactly, yep, exactly.
We need to, uh, yeah, we should vote. Motion, motion to schedule a meeting on, uh, Wednesday, June 17th at 9:00 AM to discuss a quorum change to the upcoming town meeting on Saturday, June 20th.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Second. All for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else on the COVID, Ms. COVID, Ms. Hebert?
That's all I have.
Soil board permit, gentlemen, you prepared to discuss that tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
We've got 15 minutes.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not really too kosher with doing it, just based on what's been going on with town council and yourself. And this, I really, I really think it's important to, to nail this thing down and get it right. I don't think town council's really done a good job with input. I think it's, you know, we got some good things on there. I, I, I think, I don't know, I feel better if we actually did an executive session. I know you might not, not be around to do it, but you have all your input on it. And I think it might be a better idea to get executive session and bring town council in and we can sit in a room and hash this thing out or maybe.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can do it in executive session.
Yeah, maybe we do it, maybe we do it in open session, maybe we do it individually with Ms. Hebert and, and bring them in. And one of us will sit there and, and discuss these things and hammer everything out and make sure that what we're putting on a permit, you know, is suitable for what we're trying to do instead of them looking at and going, yeah, I'm not doing that. No, I'm not doing that. I'll see you in court over that. I mean, I, I just like to make it as best as we can. I, I think there's a lot of good things there. I just think that it needs to be a little bit better before we try to submit this to PJ Keating.
Uh, Mr. Deroche? When is our next, do we have a scheduled meeting for the 23rd of, uh, two weeks from today?
Um, yeah, I think I'd like to, I think I'd like to meet on that date, yes.
Because I'm, I'm okay with proceeding with making a decision on the soil removal permit. Um, I have some questions that need to be defined and, uh, and refined, or the answers need to be defined and refined. So, but I'm okay with putting it on the, if we have a meeting for that date, then putting it on the agenda and, uh, and hoping we can build a consensus between now and then and, uh, and the questions that we have should be brought forward. I feel we're at a very opportune time with this whole situation with the land use license and with the, um, the soil permit removal, uh, which I really wanted to get into the hands of the select board where I was languishing over at the, uh, the, the soil board for many months.
I was languishing here.
Well, that's, 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 uh, my concern. I, I just don't want it to languish too long. We have the opportunity to do some things. So if, if we're going to have a meeting on the 23rd, you know, my request would be to consider putting it on the agenda for that. And, um, and working together over the next two weeks and iron out some details and iron out our questions. So we have the great possibility of making a decision on that day.
Um, should we loop, um, just, just two comments. A town council did get the, the list of, of items that we wanted to, we wanted, were proposed to be added to the soil board permit. And town council did respond to that list, actually, uh, deleted one of the items. And I'm, I'm going to read the items that are on the list, deleted one of the items. So we did get feedback from town council, but, um, Ms. Hebert, could we try to, uh, get town council to participate in that meeting on June 23rd? Whether it's in, whether it's in person or over the telephone?
Yep.
I just, I, you know, I'd like to, um, I'd like to just go through this, um, and we've got a little time. So, you know, without, without taking action, I'd just like to review what is on this list very quickly. And, um, so we've got the soil board permit, which has some conditions. And I think, uh, um, you know, our health agent, uh, Mr. Korea did a great job with the soil permit, bringing it from what it was to what it is now. But, um, there are some additional conditions that, um, and I think, I think everybody's had some input into, into some of the things on the list. But I'd just like to read this list quickly. Um, let's just, let's just get this out, let's get this out there. For, and, you know, no action today, but let's just get this out there. Additional terms and conditions relative to soil removal permit and the land use license, potentially land use license. Um, um, you know, point one, Keating shall always assure that the town has on file a current and detailed reclamation, decommissioning plan for the Keating facility, including a budget for said plan backed by a bond or such other financial assurance mechanism that shall be acceptable to the town. Point two, Keating shall provide the town with a baseline sound study and a fugitive dust control plan. Keating shall update both on an annual basis. Point three, hours of operation of the Keating facility quarry and asphalt plant shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
We're not live?
I've, I've lost count. Point four, Keating shall always operate with the overriding goal to minimize the environmental impacts, environmental impacts of their operations on neighboring residences and to contain said operations to within the Keating property line. Subpoints, Keating shall install sound and visible barriers as necessary. Keating shall have a process in place to assure that all trucks entering or leaving the facility have covered loads. Keating shall assure that all trucks entering or leaving the facility have state legal exhaust systems. Keating shall assure that all trucks entering or leaving the facility receive instruction that they should not be using air brakes on local roads. Keating shall purchase and use a vacuum sweep machine to clean the roadways surrounding the facility on a regular and an as needed basis. And my understanding is a vacuum machine would be an upgrade from what they have now. Keating shall purchase and use a fog or misting canning system, cannon system to control dust from the material stockpiled on site in general quarry operations. Keating shall purchase and maintain a Stanton tire and wheel wash system or similar equipment. Keating shall maintain material stockpile heights at an appropriate level to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood and prevent dust that travels beyond the property line. Keating shall reduce production output as needed to minimize the environmental impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, back to main points, Keating can provide monthly scale house information on trucks leaving the facility to the town so the town can understand the impact on local roadways. Keating to provide copies of all licenses and permits required to operate the quarry and asphalt plant. And last one, Keating to provide the town with labor and materials to. And last one, Keating to provide the town with labor and materials to complete three miles of road repairs on an annual basis. So those are the general points, you know, put out there, town councils reviewed them. But let's get town council in on June 23rd, see if we can finalize this soil board permit. Some of these, you know, may die on the cutting room floor, others, others are valid. But I'd like to, as a board, I'd like to get met, you know, again, as you said, Mr. DeRoche, sat with the soil board forever. We insisted they send it over to us so we could take action and, and it's mostly sat. So I'd, I'd like to move that forward. And, you know, so we got some points. So hopefully between now and June 23rd, any, any suggested edits to that document should be communicated through Ms. Hebert. But let's get town council in on the 23rd, two weeks from today. And let's hopefully plan on voting that soil permit and, and making it official.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
The only reason why I'm bringing it up is I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at a response. I think that, I don't know if it's this whole document, I don't believe that it is. I think it was a partial document that you, Mr. Chairman, might have been working on several weeks back. And it was sent from Jeff Blake, our town council, over to a gentleman named Mr. Toolen from Atlanta, their town council. And there was a back and forth with it in the hours and things of that nature are a lot different than what we're proposing. So I just want to kind of make sure that we're going to set some guidelines. They, they've come back with a couple of responses to what we have. I just want to try to clean it up and say, this is what it's going to be and we'll move forward from there, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. DeRoche, anything?
No, I think we have the opportunity over the next two weeks to do something about this.
I agree.
To be, and to be prepared to take action at that time. That, that's, that's my comment, you know, I, you know, as you know, I've had situations where I've been away a little bit. But, you know, having 14 days to look over everything and get things in order, answer our questions and, you know, and do it.
Let's give town.
It would be good, it would be good, because the, the, my point being, you know, a little bit to my point is that the quarry's still operating without a, without a permit. And without the restrictions we want to put on it, or the, or the compliances we want to put on it. Not restrictions, but compliances that we want to attach to it. And, you know, the longer we kick it down the road, they're still operating and then they're operating without it. So, so that's my comment.
Yeah, they've been doing that with the NEPTD's permit since 2012.
I, I completely agree with you, Mr. Gaspar. You know, this, this, this license is issued in November around Thanksgiving and it's good for six weeks, but they operate year round. So, you know, so we need to tidy it up and, and bring it into.
Absolutely, I, I, I agree wholeheartedly.
Ms. Hebert, could we arrange for town council to be at the meeting on the 23rd? Either, either, you know, we can, they could dial in if that, we could, we're going to Zoom. So this is perfect, we can Zoom. So we've got, so no vote on that. We've got a plan to move forward. We've got one item under new businesses, a reserve fund transfer. I think we're going to table that at this point. We're doing, looking for additional data before we bring that forward. It's, it's a, it's a server for emergency management potentially. So we'll just table that at this point and bring it back on a, on a future agenda. Next meeting, future business is June 23rd. Well, we've got a meeting on the Wednesday morning and also on June 23rd. But we've got five minutes before the public hearing. So at this point, could I get a motion to adjourn? We've got to come back in on another, on another Zoom channel, Mr. Gaspar?
On the, on the selectmen's announcements, I, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Robert Morad, the owner of Air and Vac of New England. He donated an air compressor, an industrial vacuum system to our police department in the past couple of weeks. So I just want to say thank you very much to Mr. Robert Morad for his donation to our police department.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morad.
Thank you, Ms. Morad.
Could I get a, at this point, a moment to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor? And we're, we're coming back in for the public hearing on another Zoom channel and we've got five minutes to figure out how to do that. So, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see on, we'll see all soon, hopefully, all right?
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.